Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I believe it's time to go ahead and start. It's barely after six. February 20th, 2019, and we'll call it six o'clock. I've asked Craig Davis to give the opening prayer for us. Okay?
Father, having like just a little bit of time to be able to come here easily, or like all the blessings we have, and I say that please bless that we can go throughout meeting day, and that we can accomplish things that need to be accomplished, and please bless those needs, and please bless that we can run on safety and save things in this Christ.
Thank you, Craig. You didn't know we were going to put you to work, did you?
No.
Okay, we've got some scouts here, and I've asked one of the scouts to lead us in the pledge, Kayden Yule, if you'd come up to stand there at the mic, if you wouldn't mind, and then lead us.
Please repeat the pledge with me.
I declare all agents to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kayden. Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda, approval of the February 6th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, if you go on to see petitions, uh, we'll open a public forum. Anyone can speak on, uh, an item, items that are not on the agenda. If you could, please limit your, your comments to three minutes or less if possible. So we'll go ahead and open up to anybody who'd like to comment and speak with this uh, issue.
Hi, my name is Kristi Dalton. Um, I've lived in Payson for about five years now, and my children don't listen to me, so hopefully you will.
We will.
Okay. Um, I have a page and a half, so it might be longer than three minutes, but it doesn't look like anybody else behind me, so, alright. So thirty years ago, in a crossing walk, my sister was hit by a car walking home from school. There was no crossing guard. Her back tire was completely bent in half. The run to tell my mother that my sister had been hit by a car was one I will never forget. My mother's face is one I will not erase from my memory. The panic and worry in a mother when your child is in danger is very raw and very real. A few more inches to the north and she would have been killed. She was fortunate and only had scrapes and bruises. She's now a citizen and she actually lives in Payson, and she's a speech pathologist at Payson Junior High. Government's number one role in the community is public safety, and protecting the smallest members of this community is the most important thing you as civil servants and parents can do. I will start with the numbers. On a cold but sunny day in January, January 25th to be exact, I personally counted a hundred and twenty-four children in ninety-seven cars using the intersection and crosswalks on Saddle Brook and 500 West. Again today, I counted a hundred and one children and a hundred and fifty cars shuttling children to and from Spring Lake Elementary. This is just the afternoon pickup. There's no flashing lights, there is no crossing guard. Again, a hundred and one to a hundred and twenty-four children in January, February. Most of these children I know personally, and actually most of them waved at me because they're in my LDS church ward. Just by comparison, Taylor Elementary, who is one block from here, where there is a crossing guard, on a similar weather day, has eighty-four children and a hundred and thirty-eight cars. Can you as city council tell me why there is not a crossing guard on Saddle Brook? Spring Lake Elementary needs a crossing guard. We needed one yesterday. We need one today. There are so many things wrong with this crosswalk. It is placed on a blind corner, and there's only a sidewalk on one side of the road. No flashing crosswalk sign, no reduced speed, and children are jaywalking all over the place because they are clueless. Nobody is there to direct traffic. Again, a hundred and twenty-four children and ninety-seven cars. That's a lot. Spring Lake Elementary is the largest elementary school in Payson. Seven hundred and eighty children are enrolled there, which is equivalent of Taylor Elementary and Parkview combined. With more houses being developed to the south and more congestion and the intersection, in the intersection, that by default has become the main road and egress in and out of that neighborhood, action is required by you. The Payson City Police and the city council must work together on this. As I've lived in this neighborhood, I've seen too many close calls to counter. Today alone, alone, I counted seven cars that had to hard break to avoid children being hit. My, my rage is hot. Drivers are frustrated with the mayhem that ensues at drop-off and pickup. My own daughter, a fifth grader, eleven years old, is confused at the crossing intersection, is overwhelmed at the confusion of who crosses when, who goes first, and who goes when. Children walk in front of the moving cars every single. So far, luck has been on their side, but as we know, luck usually runs out. U.Law Section 7A .03, criteria for a crossing guard is ten children using a crossing walk and an increase of fifty cars forty-five minutes before and after school start and end, meaning we are twelve times over that same criteria for children and triple the amount of cars. This intersection meets that criteria. There has been some confusion of whose responsibility is to place a crossing guard and whose responsibility it is to do the impact study. This is one hundred percent Payson City responsibility. Nevo School District does not employ crossing guards on city roads. This is our problem. If you think I'm the only person that is fretful of this, you are mistaken. I am just the mouthpiece of many, many concerned parents. As Abraham Lincoln stated, "Public sentiment is everything." I am here to tell you that parents are watching. Your voter base is watching. I have spoken to Payson City Police about this problem, and so far, nothing has been done. I have spoken to the Nevo School District Risk Management Coordinator Kathy Carling, and she is doing an impact study tomorrow and Friday and maybe Monday, depending on the weather. The principal of Spring Lake Elementary, Tressa Jordan, is meeting with the mayor, with Mayor Wright and Dave Tuckett to discuss the overwhelming safety concern. Hopefully, there is a melding of support and action taken. I implore you as other PTA presidents, myself, and parents of students, and other principals of Spring Lake Elementary have done numerous times, do the right thing, get a crossing guard before it is too late. I am really passionate about this, and I ask in earnest, we are not asking to build a bridge across the intersection, we are simply asking for flashing lights and a crossing guard holding a stop sign. This is an easy, cost-effective solution for a very critical problem. Do not wait until there is a child that is hit by a car or worse, killed. If you say this is a matter of money, do not, do not. If you say this is a matter of employing a crossing guard, do not allow it. Someone will come forward. Be proactive about this problem, not reactive. Children's lives are in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can, go ahead if you want to just speak. I, I can speak to that. I, I am a advocate of child protection. That was my assignment for a lot of years in the police department. I was over the safe walking routes of the city, and I have visited that intersection a number of times with PTA. There is no confusion. Uh, you know, the city does have to step up and provide a crossing guard and a crossing flashing lights, but there are some things that, and you mentioned them, that have to be done before that can be done. According to the statute that the state has set down for, for crossing, uh, school crossings, and that is that that study has to be done, and the school district knows what they have to do to do that. It has to be a formal monitoring of that, of that crossing, not, not disputing in any way, shape, or form what your numbers are. And I can, we've talked, I've talked with Dave. I haven't had a chance to talk with the, the city council, 'cause it just came to my knowledge that maybe you'd be here tonight. I can speak for myself, and I believe I can speak for the council. We want to do what's good for the, for the children, and you would be very accepting of having a study done and getting the problem taken care of.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that to our attention. A couple of things. One is, it's just gonna get busier there because all those houses going, but one thing that will help, there's gonna be a road that goes down to the, the old highway, which will probably alleviate some traffic from going around the school, hopefully, but...
It might alleviate the problem, but you might need to employ two crossing guards.
Right, but I'm just, I'm not saying it's gonna alleviate the problem, but it might, it might help some of the traffic from going through that neighborhood to get out to the road, so hopefully.
There's a timeframe on that road being built.
They're, they're building it right now, so, yeah. So, anyway, yeah, I'm glad you brought it to our attention. We'll, we'll look at it for sure. And it sounds like the school board's doing the study now, so that, that's part of the...
I spoke to her about an hour ago, and, um, she, and I gave her the numbers that I, I did today, and she's gonna go do her own study.
It will take more than just her going down through the city.
Yeah.
Because of, of the statute that has to match, but I'm sure they'll do that.
There's like a certain criteria that...
Yeah.
So what can we do to help get that going?
Well, you've done that. You brought it to our attention. Again, that was my assignment as a police lieutenant for a number of years. We'll stay on it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, anybody else wanna come up and speak to us on an issue? Okay, we'll go ahead and go out of the public forum, and we'll move on to staff reports and council reports. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, return.
Okay, please, please do. We'd love to have you. Keep us honest, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any staff that would like to come up and speak to us? Okay, yes, I don't see anybody racing up here. No staff reports. Okay, we'll move on to council reports, starting with Councilman Christensen, if you would like. You always say you're last, so we're gonna make it first.
I know, but it's, it's my, my cop-out. I'm on guard. Um, anyway, I, I do appreciate that they've left now, but people coming and telling us what's going on, we can't be everywhere, our eyes can't be all over the place, but we do try to resolve those problems, and I do appreciate that. And, yeah, I don't have much of anything else. It's been kind of a, 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 February, but nothing else has been going on, so thanks.
Uh, just one, one thing. National Volunteer Week is April 7th through 13th, and on April 13th, Chris Dill's own state of cinemas offered the theater that morning for us to bring all our volunteers in and give them a free movie. So one thing we'll have to look at as a council is if we could, for drinks and popcorn and something like that, but as far as the theater, she's volunteered to use that. So I think it'll be a great time to show all our volunteers, I mean, we have so many volunteers in Payson that we could fill that whole theater, especially after the, the bagging for the flooding and stuff like that, but, but even all the organizations that we have, so I, I look forward and hope that everybody that's a volunteer will be there and we can have, show our appreciation to all our volunteers.
Okay, yeah, before we move any further, I'd like to excuse Councilwoman Carter. She's on vacation, has, has left the state for about a month, but she will, she will be back and be part of us in the month, month of March. Also Doug Weldon, Councilwoman Weldon, he, he will be here, but he told us he'll be about ten or fifteen minutes late, so we expect him any, anytime. So we'll move on to Councilwoman Hype.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the people that I come and ask to do stuff for me all the time, the staff. I just appreciate that you are on it, you take care of it, and you get back to me. Also, what Brian said is the volunteers, we do have so many volunteers, and this is just a little shout out to Chris. She's awesome with our theater because she helped a lot of different people just besides the city. And so, everybody that, that you know the volunteers, like, let's, let's get there. Let's support her because she supports us all the time. And again, thank you, staff, for all your help that you give to me.
I got one other thing. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, I'm looking out over the crowd and I've seen a lot of high school students, and I just wanted to welcome them all here and, and tell them that I appreciate their effort. I know it's coerced, they wouldn't be here on their own, but I do appreciate the teachers requiring, and that this, this is where politics really happens. It's the grassroots, everything that happens here in this room affects you more than anything else. The other stuff is definitely broadcast a little bit more broadly on the news, but right, right here really makes a difference in your lives and what goes on, so it's good to see you here. Thanks.
So I guess Mayor stepped out, and I'm gonna do the scout recommendations, wards.
Okay, as I call you up, if you come up here, and I want you to stand here, so Logan Lovbridge, Ian Chamberlain, and Kayden Yule, Dwight Lawson. Any others, do we have any other scouts we have with us? Anyway, we really appreciate you coming, and I hope you're doing scout, but what we'd like you to do is tell us your favorite thing in scouting. We'll start here right with you.
My favorite thing is doing the night riddling and just worrying about life safety, safety.
Okay.
I don't know, I like everything.
Everything, alright.
They're required.
The requirements. Okay, great. Thank you very much, and so what we'd like you to do is go around the front here and shake all the councilmen's hands.
Do you have anybody who wants to take a picture? We can take a picture of the council with them. Anybody wanna do that for them?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
You want a picture?
Ask him that.
I was gonna ask him to keep one.
I'm right here.
Do you want, do you want, we did council reports, you wanna do anything from there?
Oh. Okay. Yeah. Um, it's pretty fast, but... So as Mayor already said, thanks for taking care of our streets with all the snow, grateful for the water. One thing is I was dragging over, just a, a quick thought, um, and I don't know what was mentioned before, but we've had two very influential people in, in Payson City pass away in the last little bit. Helen Scott and Zach Lees, who were both very instrumental in the Payson Scottish Festival. Zach Lees went to Payson High School, his wife taught bagpipes at Payson High School, and he founded a bagpipe band in Orem. And then Helen Scott, I think, was the founder or co-founder of the, the Scottish Festival, and that is a, a big event in our community, and just like to express my condolences to the families and my appreciation for what they've done for our community.
I'd also like to, I'm glad you brought that up. I'd like to express our condolences to Van Canaan's family. Uh, he is a retired police officer, spent a lot of years as a police officer and also a past city councilman, so I'd like to express our condolences and we're proud to have him being associate of ours, so, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to D, action items. Final flat approval for Spring Lake Meadows, Platts F, G, H, and L located at approximately 1900 South and 360 West. Jill, you're up.
It's in your podium.
It might take a second to warm up. I'll start doing the introduction, we'll see how quickly it goes. Anyway, so as, as Mayor had mentioned, the applicant is requesting final plot approval for four different phases of the Spring Side Meadows development. So pretty timely with the other ladies that were here a few minutes ago asking about the improvements being completed there. Okay. Okay, so the area that we're looking at, the area that's highlighted in red, that helps, is all included in either the Maurer annexation or the Butler annexation. So not all of this property is owned by Salisbury Homes, but all of this area was, there was a specific plan that was put together for all this area that identified uses and densities, and the applicant has met all of those requirements through this process. So this shows you the phases that we're moving on next. A through D has been approved, homes are being built or have been constructed. E and F, E has been approved and the improvements have been installed and building permits have been submitted, and then the applicant is requesting for final plot approval tonight for F, G, H, and L. So this is the property that is owned by Salisbury, or at least most of it. Platte D there up on the upper right was a continuation of their first neighborhood that has been sold to D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton is building those homes. D.R. Horton is also going to build the homes in, in Phase E or Platte E. But this just shows you how the applicant anticipates to progress through the remaining acres that they own, and then that road will lead out to SR 198 there on the bottom left Thank you, Mark. I always forget the pointer. So we do have SR, so there will be an additional connection here. Spring Lake Elementary School is here, 500 West, will not be extended until the Maurer piece develops, so I know that that's a critical connection for the school, but there will be other roads that will be built in this area to provide an access point and location. So there won't be a direct route until Maurer develops his property here and here, but we will have Main Street continue, but there will be the section of Main Street that's not done, and the section of Fifth West that will not be done with this development because the applicant does not control that property. So we're looking again tonight, we're looking at Platte F, Platte G and H, and Platte L. Platte N, or Platte J, I, and N have been submitted for review and those will be forwarded to you soon for final plot approval for those phases as well. So the applicant is very motivated, they've put a lot of improvements in, they have completed the off-site sewer improvement, so there was huge investment there in order to do the off-site utilities, so now they're wanting to get these phases done and start building homes and recoup some of those costs. So Platte F, as I mentioned, is dislocated in this location. Here's talking to final plot, don't need to go into it in detail. Platte G is located here next to SR 198. H is just to the east of it, and then L includes these lots here on the south side of 1900 South. So the, there's a lot of requirements that they have to take care of with the overall development, so that's sort of how I've laid out this, this presentation, is there's things that are required for every phase, and then there are some things that are very specific to each phase that each platte that it's been, that has been fored achieved by the planning commission. So all of these will need to be done for each of those phases. Platte F, there is restricted access on, on Main Street because it is an arterial street, so the applicant is required to install fencing. It's not just for Platte F. So the applicant is required for E, F, and the platte to the south of there, so any of those lots that, that back onto Main Street in that location, there will be fencing installed. And then there's also an existing, excuse me.
Fencing.
So they are doing, is it concrete or the Rhino, the concrete fencing? The concrete fencing. That's gonna be along that side there. Demolition permit, there is an existing home, some structures on a portion of that property that the applicant owns, and so they're working with the, the individual that's living there to move and to, so they will be removing those structures from there in order to accommodate this phase. Platte G, um, because, well, they've got two arterial roads that go through this development, so the applicant had to really be mindful of that as they've laid out their lots. But Platte G, they've restricted access to 1900 South, so all of those lots will have to access interior roads. Let's go back real quick. So G and H is right here, so all of these lots here will have to access the interior roads instead of directly onto 1900 South.
Are the ones that are on 1900 South are those ones that have shaped driveways?
Yes, so that is on Platte L. So we'll go back here real quick, make sure I cover everything, but G and H, they have that restricted access, and then on Platte G, there are some requirements to accommodate a future trail system, and then Platte H is just a restricted access. Now Platte L, as Councilman Christensen was mentioning, is they have, instead of restricted access, they have limited access, and so we, any corner lots have to go onto the, the side roads, and so you'll have these corner lots that will go to the side road, so we can limit the number of access points onto that road, but these roads, I do have a detail for it. They, the preliminary plan approval was to do circular driveways here. The applicant actually has another proposal that he wants you to consider tonight, which was recommended by the planning commission. So, so here's a circular drive. So this is what was proposed with the preliminary plan, and so to encourage anyone accessing this lot to, instead of backing into the roadway, that they have the opportunity to enter front, front ways. So that's what was approved. The applicant is proposing to do side entry garages instead and design the driveway in a way that they still have an opportunity to back out of their garage and come out to the road forward facing. These lots here are the largest in the development, this is where they will have their, more custom homes on this lot, so they really want to eliminate the amount of concrete that's in the front yard, want to create a better streetscape for that entire corridor here along 1900 South and Main Street, and so that is one of the reasons, and the applicant may want to expand on that, or if you have any questions, he can expand on that. But we may have some applicants that still want to do a circular driveway, but what is proposed is to do the side entry garage, which would be very attractive going along that corridor.
I, I'd like to, they've cut the number of entries into the road in half as well.
Yeah, and so wherever the applicant could eliminate an access point there, they have done so, but there still is some access onto those roads.
If you, it's not very conducive to back out of that garage and into the street, you'd wanna turn around.
Yeah. And that's how they want to design it, they want to design it at all, but there still will be backing. I mean, you may have a visitor that comes in and parks in the driveway and, and may back out, but whatever we can do to make it as safe as possible for the homeowner as well as those traveling on that road, that's what the applicant's attempting to do. The trail system, just as FYI, as I mentioned, there, there is a portion of the trail that actually goes through this development. So you've got the Highline Canal here, you have Spring Lake Elementary, so what is proposed is to come off of that future trail system, you know, that might be a connection that there doesn't connect to anything for quite some time, but we do show it coming off of, of the Highline Canal there or in that location, coming along by the school, continuing down through the Maurer property, but it will traverse the applicant's property in this location. So when he comes in, actually, these lots are gonna be in a future phase, but we do show that the trail will traverse the applicant's property in, in his development in this location, and in this location getting down to the park. This property here will be dedicated to Payson City as part of this development, so there will be a crossing onto the park. So these are some of the styles of homes that the applicant, that Salisbury Homes offers. They have a lot of different styles, they have modern, they have craftsman, they have traditional, they have prairie, they, so I provided you with a lot of different elevations that they offer, because one of the things that we want to make sure that we achieve with this development... Because one of the things that we want to make sure that we achieve with this development is that we have varying neighborhoods. We want to definitely have a variety of housing product and styles and materials in this to make it a very attractive neighborhood. So that's why all of those elevations were provided to you. We don't know if all of them will be used. This really comes down to the buyer. But we want to make sure that we put some general design criteria requirements in the development agreement to help achieve that. But they do have a lot of different options for the house style and size. Two car garage, three car garage. So here's some of them here. You have, you know, some modern looks here. You have prairie style here.
So I talked to Jill a little bit about this, but, and we'd kind of kicked the idea around before, but the garages, the garages that stick out way in front of the house door, like that doesn't really create a neighborly feel. I get that it might be impossible to change it because there's usually like kitchen behind the garage and things like that. So from a design standpoint, but we'd agree we'd like to see if we can get our neighbor, I mean, part of this is from personal experience. I walk out and I look right into my door and I can't see neighbors, I can't see, not the door, but the garage. Is there any way to keep the interest in doing side entry or popping out the front a little bit? So they're, I mean, I don't want to make it so it's unaffordable to do, but are there other styles out there where the garage isn't like clear out front? So you walk out your door and...
Well, and they do, I mean, they have a lot of different styles, I mean, even like here. I mean, yes, you know, there is a little bit of inset here, but it's maybe not as dramatic as what you see with some other homes. So going through all those homes, there are some that the garage is more prominent than others. I think it really just comes down to the preference of the owner. I know we have talked about that about before, about do we have something in the code that incentivizes the garage not being the prominent feature from the front elevation? We just haven't put anything in place. I think one step, moving in that direction, is working with the applicant on the side entry garages.
Sure.
For those lots in Plat N. Because, you know, that's even if the garage is, is that, is that front loaded, it's not going to appear that way because the side entry is designed that way.
Right.
So, so that's a step in the right direction, but I think...
Which I appreciate.
Require, requiring is probably something we need to...
Well, right, I understand that right now, the way it's written, we couldn't require it, but I would like to see if possible, if there's any other designs that they have.
Yeah, and based on that conversation, I did talk to the applicant about that because he's been involved even in the construction part of this for quite some time. And so he understands what people are looking for and what the best layout is and the access to the garage, to the kitchen. And so we have talked about that a little bit. But on some of these, it would cause, or would require significant changes to the floor plan, but...
I think the fact that we've got, we've got so many different, they've got so many different ones to choose from though. It will not look like...
I appreciate it, right, but if there's any other styles out there, I would encourage you to look at them. I mean, you know what people are buying, I don't, but I think it makes better communities. Yeah, that's true, the weeds.
So approval process, there's different required approvals. Preliminary plan was granted last year, so that is done. The applicant is requesting for final plat approval. There will need to be a development agreement prepared for this development. And so staff will be working on that and get that back to you as quickly as possible. And then also, because the applicant has completed some significant offsite improvements, specifically the sewer, that could benefit a lot of other property owners in that area, the applicant will be requesting an extension of utility services agreement with the city council in order to receive some reimbursement for that improvement. So a decision by the city council, public hearing has already been conducted with the preliminary plan. So any comment or discussion tonight with the public would be at your discretion. The planning commission reviewed this last week. They didn't have any significant concerns. They felt that the, that the proposal was consistent with the preliminary plan and the other than the change of circular drive. So I have down here what their motion was. So they recommended approval continued upon satisfaction of staff conditions, that the RV parking and storage be accommodated through increased side setbacks. And then for the potential setback adjustments, this is actually a request of staff. Where actually, the applicant has indicated that they can meet the required setbacks, but we have actually run into a couple of problems with some other developments with the corner lots and meeting the, being able to have a large enough envelope to accommodate a home that's similar to those in the neighborhood. And so we wanted to provide some flexibility in the development agreement that maybe that corner side can be reduced down to 15B or the front can be reduced down to 20 just for the corner lots. So, so we'd like to include that in the development agreement. So if you're comfortable with that, we would include in the development agreement for your review of the subsequent meeting. Mixture of housing products. If you're comfortable with the variety and the diversity that the applicant is providing, we would then include the design requirements in the development agreement. And then as far as the driveway design, they all decide entry garages with the driveway designed to avoid backing, or with the driveway, yeah, the driveway designed to avoid backing into the roadway to be as simple as possible. So that is my presentation. The applicant, Mike DeMarco, is here. If you have any questions for him, I don't believe he has a formal presentation because he needs to clarify anything that I said. But if you have any questions for him, otherwise, he's requesting final plat approval.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. Are Salisbury going to be building these homes that are with D.R. Horton, you think, in the end?
Both.
Both, okay. So we'll have the other mixtures of houses, which we've already looked at through, for D.R. and so.
And I just want to thank you for all of the infrastructure that you put in. I really appreciate that.
I have a question for you, Jill. Where are this new road going to meet 198? Have we talked to UDOT about that? Because that speed limit right there is 50, we changed it to 55 and there's no turn lanes or anything. Have we been in discussions, the guts?
Yes.
Okay.
But whether or not we've talked about speed limit, I'm not sure. So I don't know if Travis knows that or not. But I know that Nestor has been working with the applicant's engineer and UDOT to design this here. So they are requiring some acceleration and deceleration lanes for that intersection. But I don't know if they've talked about, and maybe that's part of their typical review as they look at new access points, but...
It looks like they're just looking at one side, it really needs to be, look at both sides.
Both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you brought that, you brought that up with the preliminary plan, didn't you? Yeah, so we'll definitely forward that to Nestor because I know he's been having the conversations with Austin over at UDOT. And, yeah, because we've been talking about, you know, perimeter and sidewalk along the frontage. You know, turning lanes are needed, so this landscape plan will likely be eliminated. So there's, there's some additional changes that will need to be made in order to meet the requirements.
Any further comments? If not, we'll go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion. So Jill, on this motion, do we just do final plat approval or do we do a development agreement and extension?
Just the final plat tonight, but if we could include those items. Yeah, the applicant is asking for some modifications in there here, the RV parking and storage. But I did include what the request is and then how the...
And those were approved at the planning commission?
Yes, the planning commission, that was their recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat approval for the Spring Side Meadows. Meadows Plats F, G, H, and L located approximately 900 South and 360 West. And the motion will include the four items approved by the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion, it was seconded. Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mike, for being willing to develop in our, in our city.
Looking forward to the next one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number two. I guess you're still up, Jill, resolution, condo annexation petition for consideration of acceptance and further review located at 2252 West Salem Canal Road.
Okay, so this is the first step of the annexation process. We have to bring the annexation petition to the city council to see if you even want to accept it for further review. So the applicant, Jeff Capazoli, is interested in annexing, okay, so for location, for the benefit of the audience here. This is Salem Canal Road, so it's on the east side of Casey. We got Salem Canal Road going to Salem. What is shown here is what is already within the municipal boundaries. So this has already been annexed and developed in Casey. And the applicant is requesting to annex about five and a half acres in this location here. The property is owned by Charlene Condi. And the applicant, Jeff Capazoli, for those of you that may not remember, he is the one that purchased the lots here in the Ashley Ridge subdivision. So he is just wanting to continue with this development to incorporate this five and a half acres. He is also, as a side note, he is wanting to adjust, he has not sold a couple of these lots here because he'd actually like to design it in a way that there's another road that comes here that accesses this parcel. So he already has some conceptual layouts for the project, but the first step is to annex the property. So tonight, he would not be approving the annexation, it would just be accepting it for further review. Then staff would go back and review the petition based on the requirements of Utah Code and city ordinance. And then once those items have been addressed, it will go to the planning commission for a public hearing and recommendation and then come back to you for a final decision. The applicant is looking at zoning that would accommodate third acre or larger lots, which would be consistent with the east side comprehensive plan. So it will probably go through the process fairly quickly just because there isn't any modifications needed to any other land use document that we have. So Mr. Capazoli is not here, but is requesting that the city council accept it for further review.
I'm just looking at 620 South there, I don't know how far into the process they are, but that kind of, I see this as a future fear, and you can see it, you're agreeing with me.
Yeah.
I think we need to be punched through there, but I don't know.
It's, it's already paved and in, and like 18 of these 26 lots have already sold.
Yeah.
So more than likely...
I have people asking me when they're going to get their building permit because they're ready to build, so.
But when, but we have had a lot of discussion about grid.
And we can't, I mean, we can't force it if it's there and as two lots haven't sold, but I bet they were the first to go because there's a big ones in the corner, but anyway, that's my, I think we need to look at that in the future and say, hey, where is this going? I don't want something similar in the same one on the next one.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Jill, I have a question for you. It seems like in our ordinance that we, I don't know what exactly it says, but it talks about 100 acres to annex. What, what does that actually say and...
It says annexations of at least 100 acres are encouraged. So it's not required because there's always going to be those times that, you know, we did some annexation at the Mount Casey Canyon also. It was much smaller because we didn't want to see annexation into the canyon. So it's better if it's larger because then you're looking at a larger area, you know, when you're laying out roads and you're looking at utilities. But I know just from past meetings about with the Ashley Ridge developments, a lot of these landlords here are not interested in selling. And so that's why the applicant has not reached out to the other landlords to see about being annexed into the city and has just limited it to this one.
I'm guessing when you just have one parcel like this, it makes it a fairly simple and fast process versus even 100, 100 acre it might take it. 10 times as much time, even, even though the small acreages still might not be that much more time consumed per acre, so.
Do we have a master plan overlay for that area? So that when they look at those roads, that it's consistent?
Not necessarily for the roads, but we do for the land use and for trails and for different things like that. And we've already had conversations with the applicant about both the land use and the trails. But point taken that, you know, we need to make sure that we're creating that grid. Another thing that we may need to look at is with the whole way annexation, we talked about having a road that goes all the way down the property lines, all the way down to Salem Canal Road. So we'll probably need to talk to the applicant about the alignment of that road to make sure it opens up all of the area in Haskellville. I mean, that's, that's why 100 acres is important, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't look, you know, at a much larger area as we complete our review for this five and a half acres.
I thought the 100 acres was the agreement with the residents of Haskellville.
No, on the south side. So on the north side, the, the neighborhood group.
East side.
There were two different ones. So there were property owners north of Salem Canal and property owners south of Salem Canal that actually had different needs. And those north of the canal seemed like they were more open to, to growth and development, whereas those south of the, south of Salem Canal Road wanted to maintain their current lifestyles as long as, as long as possible. So, so yeah, the east side comprehensive plan says 300, it requires 300 acres south of, but it's still permissive on the north side.
Okay, because I thought that was the argument we had when Lee Haskell was wanting to annex.
Yeah, that's the dividing line. It's, it's required on the south side, it's only recommended or encouraged once they're out.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I guess we're ready for a motion. We'd make a motion approving resolution 22019 approving the Condi annexation petition for further review.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Calls for roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christianson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion's carried. Thank you, Jill, and you're still up, aren't you? Okay, number three, resolution amendment to the development agreement for phases one through three of the villages at Arrowhead Park Subdivision.
So now that the subdivision's been recorded, the development agreement's been recorded, there's been a lot of things that have happened that the applicant's been able to accomplish over the last few months. And so with that, and now they're looking at building or selling to builders and builders are getting ready to build homes in there, there's been a couple of things that have come up in the development agreement that we need to, that we need to modify. And so the applicant and staff have been going back and forth on what those changes are. Staff is comfortable with those changes, but I do need to clarify a couple of things before you make a motion. But the applicant was requesting some changes, and I am going to forget all of them if I don't. So there are some changes to the setback requirements for the, you know, for corner lots, as I mentioned before. But also, we have some requirements under the developer's obligations and with the performance guarantee that were not consistent with state code. A lot of this is just new regulations and state code that we're still trying to get into our code and to get into these agreements. And so there were some modifications made in a couple of sections to make sure that we're being consistent with Utah Code as well. So that was a request of the applicant. Also, the planter size along Arrowhead Trail Street is, in the development agreement, it indicated six feet and it's actually 13 and a half feet in width. And then the applicant was, or is suggesting some changes to the size of two-story dwellings without basements, or so distinguishing, you know, how large the home needs to be with a basement and without a basement because there are some areas there that may not be able to accommodate basements. We made some changes to the storage requirements and setbacks. We actually tried to separate them. We actually were talking about setbacks and storage in the same section, so we wanted to separate those, and that is on page seven. And so we're, we're still not allowing any onsite, well, they can, they can store RVs and campers, different things on their, on their lot, but they can't be located anywhere else within the development. And then we did make a new section for the setback requirements. I do need to make a comment on that. We did send a copy of this to the applicant for review. And the way that staff has, have written this, it suggested that there couldn't be any side entry garages on the corner. And that was not our intention. Our intention is that if there is a side entry garage, it needs, we still need to make sure that the driveway is as far from the intersection as possible. So we're not having any conflict with somebody from another driveway there at the intersection. So staff's comfortable with that, we need to work, we need to massage the language there a little bit. But the applicant's suggestion of making some changes to on page seven, section K, number three, we'll make some additional adjustments there. And then also, the mayor brought this... And then also, the mayor brought this to my attention just an hour or so ago, is, I think I got a little happy with deleting language on here. But there was a concern with the reference to a lift station. We had taken out the part that we were talking about a regional lift station, and we know that there's not gonna be a regional lift station now because we have entered into an agreement with Salem City for them to be, for them to serve this development long term. And so we still want some language in there, but they will have that lift station for a certain period of time. But the long-term plan for sewer is that they will be connected into Salem City's water treatment plant. So we can make that correction as well. And then there was also some changes to the reimbursement amount per lineal frontage for some of the improvements that were, for the improvements that they have actually installed along the frontage of other properties that we've been at from those improvements. So with just those few suggestions, or staff would request that the city council, including in motion, those additional changes, will work with the applicant on the final text before this is finally recorded. But the applicant is requesting approval. I do have a couple of representatives from their development team here, so Terry Harwood is here, David Gardner is here. If you have any questions for them, otherwise we are just requesting approval.
Jill, I think there's one more thing in here, maybe I missed, you said it, but that the infrastructure doesn't all have to be put in, but they can give builder permits, but they can't get the final.
And that is one of those new state code requirements that we're trying to get used to, because it is a little different, so, but yeah, thank you for pointing out. That's good to know, that was a big change.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution amending to the development agreement for phases one through three for the village at Arrowhead Park subdivision. With the, with working with staff, they came up with some wording for side entry garages, with the setback being as far from the intersection as possible, and, or not the interchange with the main road. And that wording on that there will be a temporary lift station, and we do have an agreement with Salem City, but until their sewer plan is in place, there'll be a temporary lift station.
Okay, we got a motion, it's never seconded. Okay, a motion's been made, it's been seconded, it calls for a roll call vote, starting with councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Motion's carried, thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we'll go on to number four. Ordinance proposed amendments to the streets master plan of Payson City general plan. Guess you're up, Kent.
Mayor, council, as you're aware, we're currently in the process of doing that overall citywide master plan for transportation. What you see presented tonight is an interim request to amend the current master plan, outlining the alignment of three hundred north, one seventy north, and eight fifty west. As like you say, it is an interim, this should have probably been done back in May of last year, but I dropped the ball, and now I'm picking it up, trying to get this done. That's basically my request.
Any discussion?
Why should we not from the straight out, not from which?
On which?
On one seventy.
Because you have to hit it right angle when you.
Right angle, that's an engineering design criteria.
How come eight fifty west doesn't go all the way to three hundred north?
There's a lot of discussion on that. There's the canoe property, there is, there's discussion with previous developers to turn that and bring it out. That leg on eight fifty west is more of a place mark showing there's need for a road in there somewhere.
Any possibility we could ever get past the railroad tracks or we get it back to them or forward or?
No, it's because of the angle. They close fourth north because it doesn't cross tracks at a right angle.
I don't know, eight fifty west is still giving me a little bit of heartburn there. I know you've got a mark to show that we need it there. I'd rather see it at nine hundred west, push back a half a block, just because, yeah, I think you come up over, and maybe it's because of the way it's currently laid out, but I worry that when frontrunner comes through, that they can't, we can't cross frontrunner, so they're gonna go up and over, that's gonna widen that area, push it out, you're gonna crowd out eight fifty west.
Again, Charles, well, that's just kind of a place marker. We can negotiate that upon development.
Right.
It basically just establishes the need for that anyway.
And I understand that, but when I look at a map and then I come back to it, and it's changing. No, there definitely needs to be a road right there, somewhere in there.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
The move that we accept the amendments for the street master plan of Payson City.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Taken.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, roll call vote, starting with councilwoman Christensen.
Um, aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried, thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to the work session fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, Sarah.
Well, Mayor and Council, while she's pulling, Sarah's pulling this up. As we did last year, it seemed like the council was okay with doing this. We will put these work sessions on, regular council meeting nights. We are willing, if you wanna have a Friday or Saturday, or another time where you dedicate more time, we're happy to do that as well. But this is one of many. What I, what we thought we could do is review over last year's council priorities and discuss those a little bit, and then have the council discuss what, if there are other priorities they have for this coming budget. The other, the other thing I'd like to talk with the council about is several of you, at different times and different places, have talked about having items put on the ballot for the public to vote on. So I'd like to have some discussion there, if the council is.
Putting which on the ballot?
Just putting issues on the ballot. If the council's united, or at least the majority of you want certain issues on the ballot, we need to start working on that now and get those to you, and make sure we're there in a timely manner. So those are the couple of things we want to talk about tonight. It's still fairly early, we can go as long as you want, or as short as you want, but let's have some discussion. It is a work session, you can, we can just have dialogue back and forth, and we have quite a few supervisors, department heads here. If you have any questions for any of those. Okay, so Sarah passed out these items.
I said she passed out.
She might, after.
All this money.
So these are some of the priorities that you had last year, and over on the right, it shows those of you who put that as a priority. And then if that's been worked on in this budget year or for the future, so we can go over many of these. If you look at infrastructure, there was curb gutter sidewalk storm range, which is road sidewalk replacement. We did include in the last budget fifteen thousand dollars for a transportation fee study. I kinda put that on hold a little bit, we can carry that over to the next budget year, but several cities are looking at these transportation fees to help with roads, and I think it's a good idea. However, the, right when we appropriated this, Pleasant Grove City was sued by that. I thought we just ought to take a slow approach and see how that goes. I did talk to their manager not too long ago, and I'll call him again to get an update on where that's at, and how that's moving forward. But I didn't wanna spend that money if the court was gonna invalidate what Pleasant Grove had done. So we're looking at that, I know Provo's imposed that fee, and a couple of other cities have imposed that without a lawsuit. And so we're just kinda monitoring that.
Doesn't probably excuse each other.
Well, there was such a big difference between like commercial and just the residential, that they were charging so much to this commercial, that that's what the ceiling was about. But they haven't resolved it yet.
Yeah, and so, and there were some things maybe they did that wouldn't happen in our studies, but I'll just try to get an update that I can report to you, but that is in the budget, we can carry that over. I almost talked about downtown upgrade, uncover the stream downtown. That was put in the future, it wasn't in last year's budget. Fix Main Street, infrastructure deficiencies, timeline to replace. As the council knows, we're working on a lot of planning, the general plan, the utility plan, the infrastructure plan. And anyway, I don't need to go through all these if you don't want, but are there any?
Well, I've got a question on, so we talked about the lobbyists, they're in session right now. Do we know how those talks are going? We already hired the lobbyists, correct?
Yeah, we did that through Mountain Land.
Okay, so do we know where we're at on the roads right now?
I haven't had an update on that. Mayor, have you?
No, haven't, I know I've talked to Sean Sager, and in connection, some of the decisions that have been made on the new I-15 interchange, trying to get some players back in and discuss that. As far as trying to get it funded in the different ways of funding the infrastructure of the interchains.
I know Sean, I've seen some of the emails, trying to get the players back together with the church, UVU, and others, and see if we can push this. So we'll try to get an update with you on that. But hopefully, we can get something accomplished in the last month of the session.
I might mention that I have talked to U.S. Representative, John Curtis? Yes, John Curtis, and he's very supportive, and will do whatever he can do on his side of the equation to help get that funded.
While we're talking about lobbyists, the more I think about it, water is gonna be a really big deal. There's lots of moving parts going on right now, between Highline, Strawberry, CUP, and there's lots of different agreements, and it's really hard to get your arms around it. I would like to have somebody, just an expert in water, help us walk us through, and not just see what rights we have, but how we can protect our rights going forward. You know, if we want to, what we want to with the Highline Canal, and things like that. I think that's very critical for the next twenty.
Yeah, I agree, I think that needs to be something we sit down and hammer out again. I mean, I know the previous council was working on a reservoir and things like that, but we had all these ideas going all over the place. I think that it is critical that we get together and we look at all those options and figure which ones are realistic, and which ones we should prioritize. I know a former councilman Skinner emailed us about capturing that water again, and I don't know if that's the right plan, but we need to, we need to look at our water.
I know that, I've been meeting regularly with the Mountain Nebo Water Association Board, and, I mean, all of those are being addressed, they're talking about possibilities of groundwater storage, where you can actually bank your water in ground, some of those are good options. Looking at all of it to make sure that the water shares aren't being bought and brought in from areas where we can't really use them. So, I mean, we're working on it, and that's still a fairly young organization, but generally, some of those people on board.
And I realize there's organizations out there, but some of them have different priorities.
And agendas.
And agendas on what we have, so I'm concerned about all of that, there's lots of different groups.
Yeah, we work with them, we need to work with them, but I think Payson needs to also sit down and figure out what it is we want, and what we need to have. I mean, there's covering the Highline Canal, there's recharge, there's reservoirs, I mean, there's a lot of options, there's wells.
The wells currently in Utah County that are not incorporated into Payson and will eventually be, and where those wells will pump, I know that those are all concerns.
So here's what we're doing now, and I guess, tell us, that's a priority, to hire somebody else, but we have Jim Reilly, who's a water engineer that's been working on some issues. Hanson Allen Luce is part of this general plan update that is working on updating our impact fees and our water issues. We met with them last week with Salem City and Payson City, and anybody else up in that meeting?
Santa Quinn and Spanish.
They're also working for Mountain Nebo, it's a global thing, but they're looking at our specific issues as well. Hanson Allen Luce is one of the experts. So we have, we have those two engineers and engineering firms working for us. Do you want another person that looks specifically at other issues?
Yeah, and I don't fully like what they're doing, I guess I need to understand more what they're doing, but just like, is anybody from looking at covering the Highline Canal, are they looking at that? Or recharging from Dry Creek into the Highline Canal, or, you know, there's lots of different things. Is somebody looking at all these different options and what works best for the city? Are they looking at just some engineering things that don't, you know? So I don't know what they're looking at, I guess.
Well, and we're happy to have him come and talk. I mean, I talked to Gene Shachkoff from Central Utah Water, up at the legislature yesterday. And, yeah, they, we wanna be involved, the other cities as far as piping the canal, they've been working with Highline to get that piped. And I know there's some issues about the saved water. We as cities talked to him about being involved in that process, but.
Yeah, well, I'd love to just have a presentation here that says, here's all the projects, here's how they interact, here's how they conflict, because, you know, I've been hit up by Highline Canal to help, that we should help cover, and I've been hit up by Larry Skinner to build the reservoir, and I've been hit up by, you know, and they're all different things, and I also know that the Central Utah Water is coming down through Spanish Fork Canyon. So I would like to know what we're committed to already, and have that mapped out, and what our options are, and how we can be forward-thinking on it. You know, because everyone else is doing the workforce, but they're also working for their own interests a little bit as well, too. You know, the people who want the Highline Canal covered, they've got their own interests, and they're kinda lobbying us and saying, hey, well, this will benefit you as well. And same with all of you, you know. Yeah, I mean, they've all got their own interests, and if we don't connect to Payson, then that causes all those problems.
A lot of irons in that fire.
Right, and that's the hard thing, and I don't know if we can ever sort it all out. When I started doing this, I found out that the city's a lot more complicated than I thought, but water's more complicated than all of it combined.
Water's the lifeblood.
Right.
And I guess it just depends on how involved you want to be. We can come in and do a presentation, I mean, when we met, when we met with Hanson Allen Luce last week, yeah, we did go over a memo, there were a couple of memos they sent us, we can forward to you on the CUP water that we signed up for fifteen, twenty years ago. We're gonna have to start paying for that in the next six years. We're trying to get meetings with them to see if we can start paying that a little bit early, because it's gonna hit our budget to the tune of about one point seven million per year. We gotta absorb that in our water budget and our water rates. There are a lot of things coming, but it's valuable water, we want the water, we don't wanna lose the water.
Well, that one right there, I think, even though we're six years out, I think maybe it is a good idea to start absorbing it, but I think the conversation needs to be had and shared with the residents, knowing that this is already being committed to. So whoever's here in six years, they're like, ah, my water has increased, well, the reason was made a long time ago.
We're also having a public hearing next council meeting on the water meters. That would entail new rates, and there are a lot of things going on with water. And I'll see if we can get Hanson Allen Luce to come down and do a presentation for us, and you can ask as many questions you want. I think we're doing a lot on the waterfront, it's just, maybe we need to communicate better.
But who do they represent? I mean, are they working for, for, who they work for besides us?
They're working for Mountain Nebo, which we're a member.
Right, right.
They're also working for our consultants on the general plan, which, that's us.
Right.
But they also have other clients. I mean, I don't know if we can ever get somebody, a water expert, to say they just work for us.
Right, and I don't think so either. But I'm just trying to see where, you know, where the conflicts are and understand all the conflicts. There are a lot of conflicts.
Sure, and I think we'll always have those.
Right, but if we understand where they are, we can navigate those waters a little bit better.
I would like a little information prior to the next, if we are doing a public meeting on the meters. I can see the advantage to them, but I would, maybe if we could find out how much water is recommended for usage in our area. You know, if a quarter acre lot, it's 50% house, uses X number of gallons per year.
Well, I think the legislature's still working on that, looking at new standards. So, I don't know if they've totally been vetted out. But the hearing on the sixth is just about the lone part. But we went and met with Saratoga Springs who put meters on their secondary water a couple of years ago. Travis has a fun job of going through that 130-page document. There's a lot of information there that we need to incorporate for our city and make sure that we're doing what's there.
Right. And the reason I bring that up is because it concerns me that, yeah, all of a sudden we're just going to say, you're getting, it's this much for every thousand gallons of water we use. And I think that we've paid into it for a long time and had water rights and things like that. I'm just trying to make sure we're protecting our base rate that I feel is important to where we should be, keep us in check.
That's something to, could we check with Highline and see, because they've been talking about putting in some more wells, but going down around towards the mountain. That's not going to help us out. And I don't know if that's, I mean, it's less mountain water, but I think it needs to stay pretty much where it's going to be used and not just move for a few people to be able to use it.
Yes, well, I mean, all these things, I know the three cities, Spanish Fork, Salem and Payson, even though we're members of Mount Nebo, we did protest the movement of water from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints down here, and that's a lot of water. And their members, their organization is a member of Mount Nebo. So, even though we're partnering, we still need to make sure our ends are taken care of. And we've been protesting that and trying to meet to come up with some, that's what Hanson Allen Luce has been really involved with. They've helped us with the protests and we collectively hired an attorney on that front to help walk through that protest and how we saw that. There are a lot of moving parts. I agree with you.
Well, it's just only one of that, one or two people.
Well, and if that, if that water's just temporary and then it moves to the Goshen Valley, there's no reason for us to get used to using that water if it's going to be taken away.
You don't even think they're trying to move it, that's one of the parts.
That's what I find, they're planning on moving it. That's the goal. And they're trying to get everything in the works.
They want to allow the cities to use it for a period of time, but then when they need it, they'll take it. It just doesn't make sense for us to let developers use that water, buy it, and all of a sudden, 10 years down the road, it's gone.
We need to encourage development out in the Goshen Valley that doesn't require water.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, what would that be? Of course, and I want to mention, we did meet with the Highline Canal people a couple of days ago, and that exact subject was brought up about keeping the water on the land that it belongs to.
And we told them we would work with the amount of water we require and see if we can come up some standards that, you know, both Payson and Salem have similar standards so that we can all work together on the same. So, I'll try to set up a work session. It seems like water's a very important priority to all of us. And then we'll make decisions after we have the presentation.
Speaking of water, our water is nice and clean, right?
As far as I know.
Sports have been good.
It's not being pumped from Sandy.
Nobody's been the first time to be a straight leader. We're good, right?
What is it?
157% precipitation, 137% snow water and 65 inches of snow is what it's going to...
Now, you were supposed to get up there and say that, weren't you?
I was, but I...
Hey, Travis, anytime you talk about excess water, you look good, no matter what else is happening in the city. You should take that as an advantage. That's your PR moment.
Till it comes down too fast.
Well, yeah, yeah, I was going to bring that up. How is that looking? Are we going to be hires? Are going to be an extremely high flood risk? Or is that all just dependent on how fast the warm weather comes?
It's all contingent upon the weather.
If it stays cool...
Don't be in your sandbag yet, folks.
And we are meeting with staff to try to set up some sandbagging opportunities as it gets warmer. You know, we need to provide that.
The sandbag that we filled last, what, last year were, their gum went out. They kind of dissipate.
They don't last very long.
On a related tangent, continuing us off on the tangent, I was encouraged when Jill sent me an email saying that Forest Service is planning on opening up by Memorial Day weekend unless the new person changes his mind. Is that correct still?
That's their goal. That is their goal to open up. But it all depends on weather, snow melt, all of that. But they will be replacing the disentraider.
The typical, right there by the, what do they call that thing? The ski resort, ski lift.
Ski lift.
We call it the ski lift. And has anybody ever seen a skier come?
There was one, there was the cement pad that was there.
Oh, the cement pad. Oh, good, good, good. We all thought we all thought they're talking about, right? The bend right up above the grotto. I, I've been up there and that is pretty decimated. I would be really surprised if that stretch of asphalt survives the winter melt personally, but I just, are we, is that us that goes up and fixes that or is that the state that does that?
County.
County?
Yeah.
Or at their disposal, we get that back up and running.
Yeah, on another note, I had talked to the Forest Service about possibly replanting seedlings there. So, they're supposed to be working on that in that particular area.
Well, and while that was brought up, some hopefully potentially good news is that the state's introduced a couple of bills to pay for our 25% of the projects that we submitted through the federal government because of the burns and the scars. And...
Is that Macal's bill?
That, Macal has a bill and there's another bill.
There's another bill. Commissioner Lee, along with Francis Gibson, have introduced a bill to get the 25%, $6.3 million that would be our 25% collectively of the communities. And now, there's another bill that I think, I think Mike Val, representing Macal. That is trying to get that 25% whittle down to maybe 15 or 10%. And saying that maybe we only get half of what we're going to ask for with the state resource, natural resource committee, then maybe that can pay for the...
I mean, anything would help. We would love to have the whole 25% covered, but even if 15% is covered, that helps us out. We figured for the projects we put in for, and those will be partnered with Highline and Strawberry, it'd be about a million dollars?
Million three, wouldn't it?
Yeah, three. That's not all ours. That would be split between Highline, Strawberry and us, but if we could get that covered, that would help our budget out a lot.
Just all the public and council aware. I did sign a letter supporting that 25% request that Commissioner Lee has made.
Do you, you each want to take a minute and maybe tell what some of your priorities you'd like to see this, this next budget year? Or if you want to piggyback on some of these that we haven't gotten to yet, or if something new's come up, we have discussion on anything.
The P Mountains.
What's that?
P Mountains.
P Mountains?
And...
Go ahead.
I think we need to get some trails up there.
Is your thing on?
No, but my list doesn't work anyway. I just think we need to get some trails up there even so high and then I just think people use that.
There already a trail at the P Mountain?
Yeah, but like make trails so that people could...
Meander?
Yeah. I mean, it needs to be in, well, there's bunch of people that own it.
Service owns the mountain.
They own the P part, the part underneath.
But I just think, I think we need to work on keeping that as the P Mountain and not really having development. We're not California. We never really, I just think there are enough of the golf course, we just need to keep that open and work on getting that for people to come here and have fun. And then we need the curb and gutter guys to go and work on that.
On that note, I mean, I've talked about it and wondered. I don't know that the demographics would actually vote that through. Kent and I had a really good conversation about curb and gutter this last week. And I, and I just really wonder if we need to do a little bit more campaigning, a PR person for our special improvement districts. Pick a neighborhood as a city and say, hey, let's knock doors, let's go ask, let's see. Because to me, I think that, I mean, even my father, who was, he's totally anti-curb and gutter. And I says, hey, you know what? The city wants to do these special improvement districts. I'll put it on your bill. We'll come in, we'll do it. It's this much a foot because it's only that much a foot. I don't know. Maybe I could be swayed. And I thought, are you kidding me? If I could sway him, I could get anybody. But I really think that if we could pick three or four blocks and kind of emphasize on it and give it, and if it's successful, you know, whatever our budget will allow, let's move those special improvement districts through and see. I know I'm complaining about the hill above my house that, that's where my wife gets all of our free gravel is off the hill up above because it will wash us down. But, you know, it's...
They'll send you a bill if you want.
Nope, nope. I'm pretty sure it's, that's all right. It was just a bill for cleaning it out of the gutters. Just kidding. But I really think that just that, maybe the PR. I mean, my, there's 750 East Cemetery Sidewalk or curb, you know, I mean, we talked about that maybe that was the city's doing because they didn't do it on their side of the road and expect it on the other side. If we could run up there, maybe the reduced rate, knocking doors, saying, hey, we want to run this curb and gutter up here. This is how much it is. And I know that Kent's back there going, oh, yeah, I've got lots of free time to sit and lay curb and gutter. But, you know, it needs to be done. And if it's paced out, I mean, let's do a few blocks in the spring and see what was open there. But, you know, just food for thought.
So, I'm excited because we got one thing done off my list last year, which was getting a person for Development Services, Nestor. So, rah rah.
And a great find that was too.
So, a couple of things, mine's pretty much the same. I would like to see us do a survey on the recreation center and covering the pool and then see if there's enough interest on, from the survey from Qualtrics to put on the ballot. But then we'd have a kind of understanding where the citizens are coming from. And I'm still, infrastructure, that's an important part to me. But again, that's probably about a year off because of the master plan, general plan and our infrastructure plan. So, probably about a year off. But there's one thing that's not on my list here. I still look at, you know, Main Street fixing that. But as we're doing our branding and trying to rebrand ourselves and come up with the tagline and logo, I'd like to have some marketing budget in there so we can kick it off and really show people who we are and get our name out there as we're doing this. If we just do it and don't really show it, then it's, it's hard to...
When's the next Payson open for business golf tournament? September?
September 26th, I think.
25th.
Nice to have everything done. Have some gear and whatever else low is in place for that.
Who is our new person? We never got anybody?
We, well, we got a PR person.
We have PR. Yeah, Sidney, Sidney James Associates.
Oh, okay, that's right.
That's the one we had, the little, she's been working with us on that stuff. We're still working with her.
And Jet Morley's the one's been working on her.
Jet Morley's doing the branding. Yeah, we're doing a lot more studies than I've ever seen the city do, and it's, it's good.
Could we, could we get more input from that than just on her meetings when she hasn't? Like, does she have, have you seen stuff? Is she doing it?
Well, we've got a list of things she's required to do and we met with her last week about finishing up those things we have to do. So, we're just working through it. I'm not sure exactly how much she's putting out there right now. We're just getting the framework put in place.
It'd probably be good if she scheduled tight to come in and talk to the council where she is and what she's doing.
Okay.
Could I just interject here? I just probably got a email from mayor, I mean, from Commissioner Lee. Said, mayor, we made it out of committee ranking process at number 10, which was kind of a threshold that we needed to be in the top 10. So, we're in the top 10 for full funding of the 25% of, so with the funding. Now, it goes to the executive appropriations for final ranking, so, and funding. So, not really sure, but it just goes through the process like anything else. But we made it out of that committee that we appeared to last Friday and we're ranked number 10. And there were a lot more than 10. There's, you know, probably 30, 40 or more requests, so.
I have on here the little splash pad, looking at down the road. On that note, how are the pickleball courts? I know it's probably pretty dead right now. They're not doing anything, but we did have that, we had talked about widening that stream and making that a little bit more of a recreation area. And so, I would like to see how that pans out before the splash pad's brought back up so we could table that for a little while, push it out there. Not necessarily eliminate it, but let's see if that gets used, if that's something people are really interested in.
So, have we talked to maybe Santa Quinn about a recreational facility where we could go in together?
Haven't talked to Santa Quinn. I've talked to Salem a little bit.
Or even Salem?
Somewhere in between there. I mean...
Yeah, I think that was one of the things we talked about was, was looking at like a regional rec center with Salem, Payson and the county and see if there's any interest there.
The other thing is we are doing the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We've initiated some of that with the engineering firm. And so, with that, there will be surveys out to the public and public input. I think the first public meeting we tentatively have planned is March 26th, so coming up. And that'll begin some of these ideas of surveys, whether we use Qualtrics or however the engineering firm wants to do that and get some good feedback. And then that gives us a good basis and footing to say, well, do we do it ourselves? Do we go with communities or what do we do?
So, are they going to survey surrounding communities as well? Or are they just seeing if there's an interest in Payson?
I think right now we'll do our master plan and see what our community wants. And if our community's very strong in the rec center, then we can do a feasibility study after that, decide, do we go for this on our own or do we join with the county or Salem or...
Most people like those things until they have to pay for them.
Right.
Part of the surveys, how much will you pay?
Yeah.
So, Brian, you mentioned the survey. Is that soon enough if they start looking at that in March? Or would you like to survey out sooner?
Well, is that enough time if you want to try to put it on a, on Allen?
It's pretty easy to put, and I don't know about you, but it's pretty easy to do those Qualtrics surveys. We can put, if we want, put one on ourselves and just kind of get a feel for just that part of it. So, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I could reach out to them too and see how far along they are with the survey and how soon we can get...
Yeah, I'd see where they are first. I mean, that's their expertise. Not only them over us if we're close.
Another thing, we could reach out to the other cities and see if they want, since we have a contract with Qualtrics, we can see if they want us to put something out to their...
Well, yeah, I guess Salem and maybe Santa Quinn.
With the Hills Elcridges.
With the Hills Elcridges. Talk to all of them and then Commissioners ID Lee and Cange as well. If we're looking, I mean, if we really are looking at a regional type thing. And I think most of the communities around here want it. It's just, yeah, you want to create a cost and allow as many people to use it as possible.
I think you got to pick either one, one side or the other. The other side, personally, think that Salem Elcridges area is probably a little bit more apt than pushing Santa Quinn.
Right. Well, that would make sense. I think Salem's the better one, but I mean, Santa Quinn, they might, but really, yeah, I agree.
I would turn my nose up at it if the conversation started.
Right, right. But if we do it, it's going to be in the Salem and Payson area. It would make sense for us to do it south.
Right there, kind of on our order.
Then they just put one in Springville?
Yeah.
Yeah, just by themselves.
I just talked to people from here that go over to Springville all the time.
They had to, they had to sell their share of the Spanish Fork Airport to help finance that too.
Oh, really?
And while we're talking about that, I'd like to bring up, and I brought it up before, in addition to maybe a rec center or in combination with it, I'd like to have an equestrian center. And I've already talked with, talked... And I've, I've already talked with, talked with the mayor of Salem. As long as we're talking that direction and he's more than happy to consider a, a joint effort for that as well.
So on, on that note, I mean, there's a lot of discussion to be had on this pro or con, but there's a bill to legalize perimutual betting on horse races in the state of Utah.
Do you legalize it or legalize it?
Legalize.
I think that's right once and it failed.
I don't know, there's, there's, I don't know, they're arguing that it's different from gambling and Commissioner Hybe's behind it and a bunch of other people do.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, I, I, from people I've talked to, I've actually talked about it. I'm, I'm not real big on the equestrian thing personally, um, I would, depends on how the conversations went. But, but I, the people I talked to that are kind of in that field says, for it to work really, you have to have perimutual betting or it doesn't work, there's, there's no...
And, and the thing I'm talking about, it's not necessarily racing, it's rodeo and, and horse riding and clubs and so...
Well, my only concern there is kind of like what Jed Morley said is that we're, we're already behind Spanish Fork.
Well, it's not about being in, in competition with Spanish Fork, they're already at, at their wits' end. They, they have no more room and there's still more pressure for the other facilities to be used. So it's not necessarily in competition with, it's providing the places for...
Especially like right now, you can't find a groundfin, you can't find anything like that. I mean, what, we have snow in the ground for six months or it's wet. They go over to Spanish Fork and they're kicked out, you know, by one o'clock in the afternoon, you, you're gone.
So, is there a possible revenue source from this?
Yeah.
It pays for us, I mean, they charge people to use it yearly. And so, like, you have different people coming in and using it all the time. In fact, they have a little, the one that they used to have it up at El Cranch, you know, that great big one, he now has his in Spanish Fork, you know, and they just pay to have it, but it's a big pay that they put on.
You know, there's, you know, the stadium can be used to, for other, you know, rodeo stadium can be used for other things throughout the year. And so there's, there's revenue stream that can be had. And, you know, not discounting a private, uh, public venture either.
I think another thing is, as we're branding ourselves with adventure, we gotta start looking at all of avenues outside the box, how are we really gonna put ourselves out there? If that's where we say we are, so we gotta figure out what we, what we can do with, how much money, if we want to spend money, if we want to try to do without money, and so there are just lots of things to look...
Speaking of that, in, in, in the planning, and I think it's on yours somewhere, um, we've talked about the ETB trails out towards West Mountain. Where are we at with those, are those progressing as that...
Well, they're progressing as fast as they can. I've, I've talked to Commissioner Lee, I've talked to him a couple of times about it. And I've talked to Richard Nielsen about it, I've talked to Dan about it. It's, it's kind of a slow process where some of the area that we're talking about is, is BLM land and it takes a while for the BLM to transfer that to the county.
Just some is part of the Kilgore Mine, what's that?
Just kidding.
Okay.
And I'm involved in West Mountain. But, you know, that, that process is on, or, uh, Geneva Rock, and then you, you support it if you want. Well, and, and the area that we're looking at is no longer, is there a mineral problem there? It's a, it's a, it'd be just a process of getting a BLM to, to go through that process, yeah. And there might even be a scenario where BLM will say, well, we'll keep the land and go ahead and let you do what you want to do too. So it's, it's a slow process.
Go ahead.
I have a question, if you guys would ever consider putting to ballot a, a new city center with the branding and the growth and everything, I know it wouldn't pass currently, but sometime in our lifetime, it's probably gonna have to happen, so maybe if...
I mean, the hospital doesn't work still?
I mean, the hospital's pretty rough, but maybe if you start now, maybe in our lifetime, you know, you get something. I think that's something that might want to go.
For me, that was part of the process when you're talking about the rec centers, do you just come up with a big...
Tag team them together?
Community center, I mean, that might be too much, but I think, I think you start looking at all the options out there and I think that should certainly be in the discussion, it might be, well, that's never gonna work, but it might be, that actually is very cost efficient. And I still think, I know the, the district kind of said no to us, but, um, I wouldn't mind still looking and seeing how much it would cost to revamp Payson High School.
They are still looking at that.
Are they, especially the theaters and gyms that they have up there, I mean, they already got them built.
And they're on track.
To have rest.
Yep.
But, I mean, that could be a city rec center there.
I'm, I'm actually gonna be meeting with them on 21st, so I'll, I'll...
Hey, I'm applying for a job, can you put in a good room?
So Tracy, the problem with getting a new city center, you're making, you're making this look too nice here and nobody's gonna want to move, so. It's all your fault that we stayed here.
It's just increasing the value so somebody wants to buy it.
I just think of how inefficient, anyway, you know, it'd just be nice to streamline everything, modernize everything and, I know it's...
It needs to be on our radar.
Yeah, just on the radar maybe, yeah.
And how old is this building?
Nineteen thirty.
Well, yeah, parts of it nineteen, pre nineteen thirty, but nineteen sixty-five is when, or sixty-eight's when the new addition was put on it.
And I gave up on it in seventy-eight and started over, so. That's why the new hospital is built.
Eighty-four. Eighty-four, you said?
Um, I, I do agree with Council on Fixing, I'm gonna jump in here on the curb and gutter. I think education's part of it, like you put out the information that says this is what happens with the water and the storm drains and the overflow and whatever it is, this is how much it costs. Um, but a lot of things I think can be solved with education. Um, I would still like to see a road put up into Forbey.
Even a dirt one?
Yeah, I, that's all they want, they don't want anything but dirt, to be honest. I mean, we don't want anything but dirt.
We protected an area.
It is a dirt road into Forbey. That's what we were saying.
What, that we can access...
Oh, well, you gotta be specific.
Without going through Elcridges. Actually, even though we can't do it anywhere now. Um, but yeah, so that's one that I'd still like to see where we're at. You know, it might be that that's not usable, but I'd love to see where we're at on that. Um, on fixing Main Street, I think we need to put that, um, library parking lot on that list as part of it. And we talked a little bit about, Scott and I haven't gone down to look at it, Chief Spencer, but those, location of those trash bins are all, they're like, both crowding the walkway. Nobody's gonna want to walk through there when they have to go through two trash cans that always get slid two feet into the, to the entrance every time the trash guy comes and picks them up. Like, if we can put them on the west side, they have to, and I talked to, uh, Dawn about it. And she's like, we can walk, it doesn't have to be right next to our building, right?
Right.
The trash cans, it'd be better to have them away from your building.
I think so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a very inviting one, that's where your parking lot is. And we're saying, come to our library, walk past our dumpsters first. That's, that's an easy fix that I think we need to be looking at. I think it's an easy fix. Uh, landscaping, I'd like to see us continue looking at that, to talk to the Oltons, yeah, great inner town.
Yes, sir, while you're on the parking lots, you've got the city center parking lot, the downtown parking lot and the golf course, they're, they all need to be reconstructed, so.
How much would that be?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks.
Can we borrow some?
I got money, haven't even borrowed yet, so we can try.
But I think we should redo the parking lot of the golf course when we do the addition up there for the reception center. I think it needs to be on our radar sooner rather than later.
Is that on your list still?
Oh, yeah.
Is it not on this list?
If it's not, it needs to be.
I don't know, Miss Alia.
Tracy, did you ever comment?
I just about, when, when we were doing the downtown, uh, talking about, uh, Utah Avenue and stuff like that with Jill there, we talked about maybe putting those dumpsters into a, like a fenced area or something.
Oh, sure.
An enclosure, we thought, we had Kent and Jill down there and we thought that it might find a spot there and just enclose them so people can't see them. So that was on the, that was on into discussion.
Yeah.
I don't like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm game.
I, I, I kind of, my, my wife's brought this up, she's more the library visitor than I am. But, um, what, what's the feasibility of maybe smaller cans with a more frequent pickup? Is that cost effective, is that a real expenditure for the... I mean, we, we have garbage trucks that go by every day and that they had fifteen or twenty city cans they had to pick up. Would it really...
Well, the problem with them is they're all shared with the businesses and so it's kind of a community dump.
Could they obviously...
Yeah, but at, at the same time, speaking of a community dump, we have these big garbage cans everywhere and that's what they become is the public is throwing garbage into them constantly.
That to services is a big, big issue.
If, if we, if we put five black cans out there and emptied them every other day, would that eliminate that problem that we're having?
It eliminates the accumulation of trash, it doesn't... You still have the dumpsters invisible, so we can, we can work on it.
I, I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there, I know that McMullen Parks is a bad one because it's kind of an obscure spot for sight and I, and I mean, that's, this is a big conversation and I, and I don't intend to solve the problem now. But if we get our wheels turning and think, yeah, you know, I mean, maybe if there were smaller cans. But then, at the same time, I was up at, um, Payson Canyon Park and they had garbage spewing out of that big old dumpster all over the place and it was, I mean, what do you do at that point in time? So it, it is, it is a two-edged sword and, and something we gotta watch. But, and I wouldn't be opposed to maybe putting some cameras on and, and maybe collecting a little revenue on people that are illegally dumping. Uh, I tried to catch one guy, I couldn't get around fast enough and his license plate was obscured or I'd had him, but he, he was, he had a whole trailer load of stuff, he was jumping. I have a camera in my car, I was just gonna videotape him, but couldn't get position, couldn't get turned around.
This probably wouldn't work with the mentality of Americans. But in Japan, they eliminated trash cans and they have no trash on the streets.
How do they do it then?
They know, there's nowhere to put it, so they pack it home, pack it in, pack it out. We would have to change a lot of our mentality for that to work here, but, but they did find that in general, smaller trash cans actually had less trash than the big dumpsters that kept overflowing.
Dave, one thing I'd like to have you look at, and I know every department wants more employees and needs more employees, but it'd be nice for us as a council to know kind of, if there really is a real need and priorities and that, so we can look at that.
So, we have a list from all the departments, but we don't want to bring that to you till we kind of edit it out. So we will bring that at a future meeting. Because there, there is a, there are quite a few requests for additional employees.
And I think we need to look at it.
And a limited budget, so.
I, I think it's important to, a ratio, to know where other cities stand, number of points versus number of people that live in their cities would be good for us to kind of try to stay somewhere in the middle of that range personally, but...
Well, we're, we're poised to grow and if we don't have some key, key individuals in key places, we, we, we won't do the way we should.
Yeah.
Payson Point, but you know, it is...
He needs another awesome person like that.
Speaking of trails, hire another Nestor, find a duplicate Nestor? I haven't talked to Mr. Mitchell. Um, one thing I was thinking about with trails, uh, where are we at on completing the trail system on the Hancock property? Have we made any progress there? Not yet, uh, I'm working on it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm working on it, okay. And then the other question I have with the trail system is we just have the bulldozers go through. Is there any plan or discussion that we can have till I make those permanent? Like the permanent fire breaks and we've got like the trail system that connects all the communities?
I think we brought, if we not bring that up at that one meeting over in, uh, Mountain Lands, Mountain Lands is aware of it, then, uh, that was a suggestion that we made.
What are they having the next year? The Forbey or...
No, the Mountain Land Association.
The meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
At the same place? It is at the same place and I think it's the same time, so what time did we go, five? Five, let me check. Yeah, but it is tomorrow.
Um, how are we on the, the Barnet Trail, did we get that surveyed?
We have not, but we've met a staff to start putting a plan view together of the alignment. We won't need to survey it until we've actually identified the best alignment.
Okay.
So, but we have talked to staff about the two plans and the survey and so it's in progress.
I, I was really optimistic with that, I was, the Maple School District was super awesome to work with on that. Um, there's a little section of the trail we're missing right there and they were more than willing to deed over the land and even put up a new fence for us. And so we'll move forward with that, for those of you that don't know how we're talking here in incognito, but that's...
Jill, I found that, it's at five o'clock.
Where are you going? Um, I have another commitment, so I will not be able to go, so, but we can make sure this is over there. We probably want to do that.
All right, any other suggestions, but this is a lot of stuff, can't guarantee it's all gonna get done, but...
I have one more thing.
Add them to the list.
This is a suggestion for Sarah that's hiding back there, I think. Did you figure out a way for us to come up with two million more dollars next year?
Done.
Okay.
Okay, were you ready to move on then, or is there further discussion?
I'm just kind of curious, there's, there's not a lot of audience that aren't staff out there. In fact, it might just be three people over here, oh, four, guess my dad counts. And any, just curious if the community has anything that they are interested in us focusing on? I mean, we're putting surveys out and we get, we get information back from the surveys, but we've got people here that are talking about it, why don't we...
Your dad wants to...
You already, he already said you don't count, so.
He counts.
Is there a way to let people know what it would cost for their curb and gutter if they were interested? I mean, I...
Well, I think that's part of the, the discussion. And when we do a special improvement, we'd say this is how much it is.
Where'd Kent go?
He's hiding too.
I, I, and I, the numbers he was throwing at me was twenty-seven dollars a linear foot for curb gutter sidewalk and they would backfill the asphalt, but it has to be done as a special improvement district, correct? We can't just come in and do one section, so you've gotta do a whole block. And I don't know, is there a size constraint with that?
As far as split by...
Like, a special improvement district, how big does it need to be?
We, we, in the past, we've tried to comply to, uh, say, Richard, like, or, uh, Central, or like the Watertown Union, or something where, something to that effect, yeah.
So...
They can be, just can be about...
That's the special part, right? However they want them, but... Right, and that's, that's, that's the issue is, is knowing and, and checking on things and seeing. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to knock doors in my neighborhood to be an example to the rest of the city, that's what it takes, but...
But who do we need to get in touch with to get us out of the special improvements?
There, there are a couple of things on special, they're not called special improvement districts anymore, they're assessment areas. But we, we've been working with Zion Bank and there's a group that wants to build some homes that's in the infrastructure and up around the golf course. And that'll probably be coming to you, but that, that takes quite a bit of cooperation and estimated cost. And I think this one might make it through, but, uh, they, they have to get a, they should be signing consent waiver. What we did last summer with a couple, just a couple of houses that finished a block up, we just worked individually, it's not a formal SID, it's just, we worked with them, we gave them the cost and we can do this and you'll have to, we, we put a lien on their property and they could pay every year. And if it gets done, we can try to do that. Or, you know, I had Zion Bank come down a few years, um, back and just present to the council, how you do in assessment areas. Generally, you have to have at least fifty percent of the people in favor of it. The one up at the golf course, we just said, we want everybody in favor, we're not willing to do it because we don't want fights and battles. So there are different ways to do it, if you want to focus on a certain area, we need to contact those people and get some engineers estimates of how much that cost would be to put the curb and gutter and sidewalk in. And, and then do some PR work, you have to go talk to them and see if they're willing to, to do that. If you do a formal one, again, you have to give notice and if, if any of them protest, then you have to go through some hearings, you can still do it with just over fifty percent of the people. of the people, but that makes it hard sometimes politically, because you have people that aren't in favor of doing it, and you're kind of force that on them. But if we need to get some of these curb and gutters done, you may have to go down that route.
These Qualtrics surveys, I just really would like to know the public's opinion on it. You know, I mean, we talk about it here all day long, and the three members of the public that are here, they can weigh in, but it's still at the same time. Four? Oh, my! Some of the, some of the regulars are starting to think they're unstaffed, I apologize, I apologize. But I'd like to know what the young people in the audience out there, the young persons, maybe we should clarify, what should like to see moving forward is, what does Payson lack that you feel that we really need for the future generations? It's a lot of weight to put on your shoulders, a spur of the moment, so if you need a minute, we'll give it to you.
You know, I really like what you guys are saying about the parking lots, and, I don't know, I thought the recreational center was pretty cool, too, obviously, but, yeah, I don't know, I don't have a lot to say, but, yeah, it's just, like, you kind of understand what's going on in the city, I think. Yeah, I don't really know what I think.
That's fine, I knew it was a lot of pressure.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. I have two things that I really would like to see greater emphasis on, and I don't know to what extent. You know, number one, economic growth and the business park, and all aspects of the, not, not restaurants, but, you know, I'd like to see a diversity of economic growth, particularly the business park and the industrial, and, you know, retail. A real, real concerted effort with that. I think, you know, there's a sound being made out of California, and it's people getting the heck out of there at an unprecedented rate, and wanting to get out of there. They're all moving to Arizona, Texas, and Utah. That's where they're going, and because California's making it a horrible place to live. So I, I think it's a great opportunity for us. Our, our land is a lot cheaper than Saw Lake, North Utah County. I mean, I have a business in Springville, the Springville Business Park there. We practically helped Asa Nestle build the recreation facility there in Springville by our humongous electric bill that we pay there. But, and it's huge, we're the second largest user of electricity in Springville. But, so, economic growth, and the other is, the recreation thing, I go to the Provo Rec Center at least three times a week during the winter months. I have been going to the Orem Rec Center for, with all my eleven kids, for the last thirty-five years, probably fifty times a year. I'm still, I'm an old guy, and I still go to the Rec Center almost three times a week in Provo. I haven't started Springville yet, but I probably will.
You should.
So I, I would like, I don't know that we can afford it, like, Springville, you know, that's, it's, it's a lot of money, but I certainly support it. I want to be one of your cheerleaders for a covered pool. I've swam a hundred laps in the last two days, and it's not at Payson Pool, it's Provo Rec Center. And so I love the rec center concept because it's a great place, I just don't know how we're going to afford it. It's, we're a smaller community, timing, like we communicate, you know, maybe Salem and Asa, and everybody can pitch in, and, but I certainly love the idea.
I don't know if it's been discussed earlier, but Main Street, I don't know what can be done about traffic on Main Street, having just one outlet, that Main Street exit. It's a morning between seven forty-five and nine, it can take fifteen minutes to make a turn onto, onto Main Street. Same thing in the, during rush hour, people are coming back. And I realize, because that's, that's where I live...
That's us talking, and that's Nestor, he's the one that's pushing, making the agency to be supported by Nestor.
We, we, we're, you know, I don't know whether you're aware or not, but there's another interstate interchange plan that...
I've heard stories, but I haven't heard that it's, there's any...
It's very close.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're talking about with lobbyists, is trying to push, get some push to get the money sooner.
It's an uphill start, and part of, part of that picture's going to be U V U, that's about where they want to be, and so we're, we're working with U V U, we're working with Mountain Land Association of Government, we're working with lobbyists, we're working with everybody we possibly can, Nestor being one of those guys, has got the ability to put things down on paper, and so we're pushing just as hard as we can to make that a reality. The state is going to sign an agreement on that shortly, if they haven't already, so we've been...
Except for the funding.
What's that? Yeah. Except for the funding. That's the easy part, and that's been hard, but...
Hard to understand.
Yeah, but we are pushing just as hard as we can do that, and we feel your pain because we drive there all the time, too, so...
And Nestor has been doing studies on traffic flows on one ninety-eight and Main Street, and getting with UDOT, and trying to push those forward a little bit, moving them up from the twenty-sixty.
Excellent. Go ahead.
One more thing, yeah, there's a, and again, I apologize, we came, we thought it was at seven, not six, but, U T A, I mean, I would like the option to take a bus to work, and I work at Lakewood Junior High, just right close to the hub there at U V U, at the Orem Campus, but it takes me two hours. I've got to go on the bus here at five forty, and I get off the bus at about seven forty.
That's, that's another, another area that is involved in that interchange, and U V U is, and they've modeled it.
Pushing for the train.
Yeah, they've modeled it, and we do real well with that modeling, and again, that's funding is that, is the big F word, I guess you could say, but...
Seems like we pay as much for U T A taxes and stuff as anyone else.
Well, yeah, one, a couple of things is, one is, going back to the Main Street and that one ninety-eight, U, UDOT has, is looking at, they have plans how to take care of that, they have to widen that one ninety-eight through there, and so there are stuff that they're working on.
I hope it's not the same Joker as it did the Provo Main Street interchange.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. The other thing is, if with, we're looking to have a front runner come down here, that's in the next ten-year plan for, for MAG, and also they're looking at having a, a bus run that's, that's a, they used to have it, I think, but it's a fast one, you know, so it doesn't stop, and all this dot express one, then right farther down the road, they're looking at like a bar, like a Provo Orem for this area, so those are the plans, and I'll see.
And, you know, some of those things can be brought quicker if certain things happen, you know, like U V U is on the ten-year plan as well, but that can be hastened by certain things that are hopefully going to happen. So it's, it's frustrating in some ways, but exciting in others.
So they took the funding, and it's all been diverted to Provo Orem, and not to us for a while. That was frustration.
When you're talking about ballot issues, I know...
We probably need to get that out.
City center or covering the pool, do you want to do surveys before you make a determination and try to put some surveys out there?
I think, I, before we do surveys, I'd like to have maybe a plan in place, so that we don't look like we're just shooting in the dark, is my opinion.
Well, there's, there's types of surveys, there's like general interest surveys.
Right.
Which are a little bit different than, and what do you think about this? Because the general interest is like, no, we don't want to do it, and you want to spend, how much is it on, on drawings? Is it twenty thousand dollars?
But I think that there's a lot of, I think the interest is there, I think, you know, if the...
But I think it too, it has to do with the other cities, too, if, if you could get one, a central one, you know, for Elbridge and St. Louis and Asa, and I know St. Louis can come. But then splitting the cost, you know, instead of six million for us, three million or...
Six million dollars probably wouldn't go very far.
The other thing to point on interest is, the handful of ten people that talk to you do not represent the entire city.
Right.
And so, but I mean, recycling, a lot of people say, we want recycling, we want recycling, we're now below fifty percent take on recycling.
And I think with, with the surveys, what you do is, you do one that you start with, are you interested in covering the pool, are you interested in a rec center? They're also, you have ninety-five cents, yes.
Which of these options are the most interested you'd be in?
And then, and then you do some, would you be willing to pay this much? Would you be willing to pay this much? But then you start...
How interested are you?
Right, and then you can kind of really see how interested you are. We know, we can know about, like, is it going to cost you ten million? Well, if we put it out there, we can figure out what that number will be, and then put that on the survey, and then we can kind of narrow it down.
I really think that Senator Henderson's idea of the initiative balloting, I think even if we're pushing for something like that, we need the cost upfront, how it's being paid for, and then present what it is we're trying to get, get through on the ballot.
Right, that's supposed to be used to balance.
That's the end result of the process.
But I mean, even in the, even in a survey situation, when you say, hey, you want this? Okay, are you, are you willing to pay for this, really this, this way? You know, let's, let's fill it out a little bit.
Well, I know that they, they did a survey in San Quentin, and more people wanted a rec center, and they wanted to build like a, a center for the older people, and that was voted down, because all these younger people wanted the rec center. They would, they would pay the six million dollars for the rec center, but they wouldn't pay the six million dollars, you know, for the senior citizen. So I know that they've already had, you know, those things go on, but, you know, if they knew there was one six, seven miles away, would they be willing to support it? Would, would San Quentin be willing to support it?
Well, I think the first step is to find out what, what people want, and then go from there, and then we can get more detail as we find out what is their want, what all the wants.
And then, then finding out what they want, you know, off the ballot, because...
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. We're not allowed, yeah, we're not allowed to do opinion.
Just a survey, just a simple survey.
No, no, I understand.
And give, give them two choices, which one you want.
Yes.
Yes or no?
Well, or like, that was a lot of... A region of our own, or...
But a simple one.
I think we're riding a dead horse here, and you should pay them.
Okay, we ready to...
I'd stay longer if we had dinner, but...
Somebody bring that?
We still, we, I'm still going to stay longer, we're going to go into closed session.
Thank you. Okay. We go to half, closed session, is there a motion to go into closed session? Closed session. Okay, all in, well, it's a roll call, starting with, okay, I?
I.
Okay, we're motion territory, we're going to go closed.